It says network discovery and file sharing are turned off.
Want to share?
No kidding.
sharing is caring.
As long as you're late now.
Okay.
And was, uh, he's ever looming? Mr. Pearson.
All right, we're ready? All right, would you please stand? And I'm going to open us in word prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. Father, we thank you for your grace and mercy to us. Father, we thank you for all that you've done for us in the Van Zand County. Father, we pray for those people who have been affected by the hurricane in North Carolina and Kentucky and those surrounding areas, Father. Devastation that they've had to live through, Father, as they rebuild our lives. Father, we just ask that you be with them. And Father, we ask that you be with the people in Florida as they prepare for hurricane. That you would give them safety in fleeing the area and that the hurricane would not be as devastating as it's being projected right now, Father. Father, we ask that you give us guidance, wisdom, and the decisions that we make in the conversations today that would be honoring and glorifying to you. And it's in your son's precious name that we pray. Amen. All right. Pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge to the Texans flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. I will call this meeting to order at nine oh two AM on Wednesday, October the ninth. And we'd like to remind everybody to silence your cell phones. In that regard, we do have a quorum present. All commissioners except for Commissioner Pearson are present today. General, item number two, general announcements. We have Harley Miller here to make an introduction for our agri line system.
Morning, guys. How are y'all?
Good morning.
Good deal. I'm glad to be here this morning to introduce to you all Mr. Leon Watson for our county extension agent ag natural resource here at Agro Life Extension. A little bit about Mr. Watson. Mr. Watson has been an ag instructor, FA advisor at Lindell for two years. Also agriculture instructor and FA advisor at Camp ISD. Also same thing agriculture advisor, then agriculture teacher at Mineola ISD. And also the Woodville ISD, Westwood, I'm sorry, Westwood ISD, then also Clifton as a technical school for 16 years. Comes with a lot of agricultural experience. His degrees that he has, he has BS in agriculture education and also a master's in vocational education from University of Missouri Columbia. Also has a EDS, education leadership from Central Missouri State University and also Missouri. So we're proud to have Leon as our county extension agent ag natural resource here in Van Zand County. He'll actually start on November the first. We're glad to have him accept the position to be ready to start working on November the first. I appreciate it. And it gives Leon to you all.
Awesome. We're excited to have you aboard.
Thank you, sir.
I know Elena will be. And you've got quite a program going on right now. So anyway, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And looking forward to working with you.
I'm excited.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. All right. Are there any other general announcements? If not, is there any public comments? Susan, no public comments. All right. We'll move on to item number four, consent agenda. The consent agenda is a routine, considered routine by the commissioner's court and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items unless the county judge or commissioner request an item be removed from the content agenda and considered separately. Is there any items that need to be discussed separately?
I need to comment on the part of the bills just for transparency. Precinct three and four bought a a foreman truck, a work truck from Hall Chevrolet, forty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Precinct fours was a tweet that we are going to auction off a two thousand four, two thousand and four shed to twenty-five hundred, had four hundred and thirty, thirty-nine thousand miles on it, and we've been having problems with it. And so
Four hundred thousand?
Four hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
You couldn't get another hundred thousand out of it?
No. So we got our use out of it. We, the precinct four bought a new foreman truck for forty-nine seven, and also it's on item eighteen. Precinct three bought the same exact truck with the same exact price. His was a two thousand and seven Ford F-150 with two hundred and sixty-nine thousand miles on it. And they've been having a lot of safety issues with it, and they traded theirs in to Hall Chevrolet for ten hundred dollars. But so there's two substantial bills from precinct three and precinct four. Just to be transparent about it.
Okay. Any others? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion passes. Item number five, discuss and consider approving a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Operation Green Light was started about two years ago by the National Association of Counties. And it's to honor veterans for the, I think, November fourth through the November eleventh. That's during Veterans Day. And it, where you light up public buildings in green. And we already have all of the accessories because we've done it two years now, and this will be the third year where we just replace, put lights out to light up the courthouse in green. Is there, is there a motion to approve the resolution supporting Operation Green Light?
May.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign. Motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider approval of the form for a one-time exemption from platting requirements. Me and Keith and Dennis were on the, the committee set up to provide a one-time exemption form for folks that are needing to sell their sell a portion of their property and, and ask for an exemption from the subdivision rules. I felt a particular amount of of concern for a couple of reasons. The first reason being that at that same meeting, we decided to put on hold anybody being able to transfer property, you know, that fit within those guidelines until we come up with a form. So now it's been six weeks. I drafted the form, you know, early in the, in the month of September and here now we're, we're on the, the ninth of October. And there are people that are out there waiting to be able to transfer property and do things that they legally should be able to do with their own property. If you pay taxes on your property, you should own it. I would argue that you should own your property where they're, never mind. So we created this form so folks would have an opportunity, and I wouldn't feel that it would be necessary for us to, to rush this thing through if we didn't put a moratorium on approving these one-time waivers for folks to be able to sell their property. So we developed this form. The three of us have agreed on the contents of the form. And the last component, which is not really, you know, Dennis's area, is how we internally keep track of what's going on. And my proposal to the commission is that each individual commissioner keep track of those waivers. It's a one-time, one-person exemption, which makes it very easy. And I think it should be tied to the particular piece of property that you're asking for. So if you own, you know, ten hundred acre tracts and, you know, in my precinct or anywhere else in Van Zand County, you shouldn't be limited to just one exemption on one tract, but you know, each of your tract should have an exemption available to, for, for one-time conveyance of property less than 10 acres. Our subdivision rules are, are pretty particular and, and there, there's a lot of overlap in them and but, so we put this form together for folks that have these needs for these exemptions. From, from a fundamental standpoint, we, we need to have less regulation, less micromanagement, and allow people to do what they need to do with their own property. That's just my own philosophy and that, that the commissioners may or may not agree with that. But the, the form is available. It is up to each particular commissioner, keep track of what's going on within, in their, you know, who's, who's asked for an exemption, who's received it, who has not received it. And these are exemptions from the subdivision rules and regulations. So that's the foundation of this and that we have the form. Each commissioner keeps track of their own precinct and keeps that and conveys that on to the next commissioner. And then conveys that also to Keegan so she can keep a master list. And so, and because I have people waiting in my precinct, I know that there are people waiting in other precincts. I'm asking the commissioner's court to go ahead and approve the work that we've already done on this and, and allow the folks that are in the community to get back to, you know, to their business.
Did, uh, did you, Dennis and Keith have a meeting over this?
You could, I would, I would characterize it as virtual meetings. We shared the form over over several emails and made a few tweaks as such to it. And, but we have not, all three of us sat down in one room at one time.
Well, we put a committee together where I thought was good people. You've got your background is dealing with property law. Keith being senior commissioner has been here from the beginning of the subdivision policy all the way to now. He understands it. Yes, has been on the committee with that and is very good and knowledgeable. Well, I tell you, it was a very good committee we put together to bring us a product that we would have that would work for our needs going forward with this. One thing I hate to get into is the philosophy of of why is that we can never get it right the first time, but we have plenty enough time to get it right the second time. So I would like for this committee to actually be able to sit down and meet and get this thing completely right before we go approve it. So we don't have to come back and readdress it and let it move forward. And I appreciate your concerns and your philosophies on property rights. Right now we have a subdivision policy in place that we work under and ask commissioners. It's our obligation to abide by that and enforce that as the county sets forth. And that's what we have to do until we get to another place and something changes. So at this time, I would like to table this and give the committee an opportunity to sit down and meet and bring a completed copy of what they want to do for us to review and approve.
Now, I would agree with that. I mean, you said that y'all did this September, six weeks ago. Why haven't y'all had a meeting? I mean, somebody needs to take the reins and get it done. It's not it, it, somebody needs to have a meeting. Shouldn't have waited six weeks. And this would have been done.
Oh, I agree. You, you know as well as I do that I'm here just about every single day. So I'm, I'm available.
I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying y'all three need to get together and, and get it done.
And I'm saying that we have the form approved. The only thing that has not been approved, that Dennis doesn't have a voice on, is how we track it. And the way we track it is the most sensible way available. And if you were to really actually get into it, the, the one-time exemption overlaps with several other areas in the so if you wanted to do this a hundred percent, so you wouldn't ever have to come back and do it again, you'd need to rewrite the subdivision rules so that they're clear. You can't write fifty-two pages of stuff that overlaps and crosses and back and forth. And, and, and rules be in place or not in place, we should not be infringing upon the property rights of people in our county.
Well, I've made a motion to table.
I'll send it there.
Question.
All right. Is there any, any further discussion? All those in favor, table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Or, uh, motion passes. I'm sorry, to table, passes. All right. Item number seven, discuss and consider request for a one-time exemption from platting requirements for Dorothy mums on four point five one acres sold out of twenty-two acres located on State Highway nineteen. This is in precinct two, and it's one of the reasons why I was kind of moving toward. So you've got an estate here where you got a, 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 a family that's trying to sell property within, you know, that's, that's in the state that they probated, they've done what they need to do in order to move forward. They got contracts on it exactly right now. And they had a closing date in August. They had a closing date in September. They had a closing date in October. Now, and they're going to have to put it off again because we, they can't get an exception from our subdivision rules in order to accomplish what it is that they need to accomplish both for the court, the estate, for the inventory and the probate, and for what we're doing because we want to administratively hold up the process. So at this point, because we didn't approve number, number six on this agenda, we'll have to table this item.
And that's not her fault. It's actually the commissioner's court fault for having to do this because the meeting was not set up six weeks ago when we decided this when it should have been. So the court has heard her. But on these subdivisions, we all know this got to be consistent, and there is no consistency on these subdivision rules on anything, and we have to get that straight, not just for one individual, for everybody in this county.
But I'll tell you this, that if, if somebody comes before us and, and either sells or doesn't sell and has or doesn't have our approval, we have no ability to stop them from doing whatever they're doing. We have no enforcement arm. So for us to administratively keep somebody from, you know, from being able to, to move forward. She could, quite honestly, she could sell her four and a half acre piece of property right now with the, you know, the title company. Whether we have subdivision rules in place or not, it's a courtesy that they're coming to us, not a necessity. They have no legal obligation to come and get our approval to do this because we have no enforcement arm.
I'll second the motion to table.
And I was making a suggestion, but if y'all, I wish y'all get together ASAP and we can call a special session and get this thing done. And that way we're not pulling anything out.
All right. There has been a motion to table a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign. To table passes. Item number eight, discuss and consider request for variance regarding Canton vessels flat located on Van Zand County Road twenty-three eighteen. Van Zand County Road twenty-three twenty-three in precinct two. This is Canton Vessels. They have a representative here with us today. So if we could give them just a moment.
Morning, guys.
Good.
I was here a couple of weeks ago discussing the variants with you guys. Me and Cliff.
Introduce yourself, please.
Al Michaels. I'm a representative developer. Cliff and I talked about the barriers and gave some information about our vessel homes and how they include, I guess, backtrack. We're looking for a very expensive service buildings, which include toilets, showers, water machines. I gave a place some information for our vessel homes, which included all those amenities. Also we're proposing to have a ranch house that has all those amenities on the overall property. And
Is that ranch house existing now?
Yes, yes, sir.
And, and so they'd have availability to that immediately?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. And our development will not include any trailers, RVs, or tent camping. It'll be strictly the vessel home. So there'll be no we think the ranch house would serve well as the alternative to the service building.
And, and you, previously you'd asked for a variance related to the roads, but you're saying all the roads could be you're proposing that they're all going to comply with, with the requirements. And so the only variance is from that service building, which each of these are permanent structures. They have all of those items in them that the service building will have. And if they need additional, they can go to the ranch house.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't have any further questions unless somebody else does. All right. So variance is basically to, to ranch house can service the community service. That's correct. And, and the reason we needed a variance on it is because it's on the remainder that they have, they have how many four hundred and
About four twenty-five.
Four hundred and twenty-five acres total out there. That's all contiguous. They've, they chopped off eight acres for this, for this for this vessel area. So while that ranch house is contiguous to this, it's not sitting exactly on the eight acres. It's sitting on the, the, the balance of that four hundred, the four hundred acres. So it's just, it's just right up the, right up the road from where this is at.
Yeah. And we figured you were going to need a car to the vessel home anyway, so you'll have a car to get to the ranch house.
Right. Is there a motion to accept this variance? I'd like to make a motion to accept the variance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, did you vote aye?
Uh, I seconded. Sorry, I didn't.
Okay. All right. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss and consider approval of Foster Edition Platte located on Van Zand County Road thirty-five thirty-five in precinct three.
Yes, this is Keith. He actually talked about it. Uh, Mr. Foster is going to sell, he wants to, he's going to plat a, two lots that he is selling and he, for filing purposes, he would like to get this in, in, but he is going to plat the two lots and get them sold so he will fall and he has everything turned in. He's bought it by all the subdivision rules and regulations, but he will plat so there won't be because we cannot do exemptions yet. He is willing to plat it so he can get it, get it done. So I motion to, to approve this for filing purposes.
All right. Motion made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign. Motion passes. Item number ten, discuss and consider acceptance of request for a variance regarding Nine Tree RV Park Platte located in Farm to Market eight fifty, eight fifty-eight in precinct four.
Uh, this is mine. Tonda was supposed to be here. I guess she's in court. I don't know. And y'all are supposed to have a lawyer on soon.
We are.
Yes.
Mr. Cannon, in here.
Time. He said that he was having uh, he was having problems trying to zoom in.
Doesn't really get it, that he doesn't really connect it always.
Can we move on to the next item while we, while we get him connected?
I would say so.
All right. We'll come back to ten just a minute. We'll go to number eleven. Discuss and consider interlocal agreement between Etcoq and Van Zand County for Siri twenty twenty-five.
Yes, John, I put this on here. The, the Siri grant comes to the East Texas Council of Governments. And when they have heard that the board approved allowing schools to come on the radio system, they was excited. And so they offered to give us a grant to help increase the capacity of the system to carry the extra radio traffic. They've approved an additional repeater at each tower site at a sum of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the timing works out great because we're going to start installing equipment these sites this month. So with this approval, we'll be able to add that right as we go. There'll be no extra charges for installation or program or anything. It'll just fall right in line with the, with the project. And I'll make a motion to the court approve this resolution excepting this from the court.
All right. Motion made. A second. I have a question. You don't need to, there's no contractual obligation for us to go back to, to the to the tower owner for additional approval?
No, sir. We're not adding any extra antenna or infrastructure. It's just an extra repeater in the, in the rack down in the building.
Oh.
It all looks the same.
I second. All right. Motion made. Second. Uh, is there any further discussion? Thanks for getting that done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like a sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss and consider purchasing additional radios for Van Zand County. I had, I had asked Chad about, about this. It, it was my understanding that Commissioner Melton indicated a desire to save some money, but Chad had said that there are, there's, there's money still available in that grant. And so I wanted to, to get radios for, for my foreman and, and a second radio perhaps. Chad has loaned his radios out to highway patrol until they get connected with, with our system. So I would take the, the radios that, that I'm asking to be included in the grant and, and you know, at least one of them, if not both of them, over to Chad's group to replace those that he's given up in, in the interim. So, so I'm asking the, the commissioner's court to approve this additional here. And, and I'd also like to ask with the, with the schools and these other people coming on the radio system. I, I, I see a greater and greater need for oversight, not only now, but moving into the future. But I'd like to get a list of all the, the radios and who has them and, and which whether it's fire department or police department or highway patrol or, you know, everybody that's going to be on the system. So if the, if, if you've got or your, your group has a list of those, that'd be helpful if I could get a copy of that.
Yes, sir. We've been doing a spreadsheet to maintain and track that. And as we're building the programming for that now, we're tracking that. You got to list the radio model type, serial number, and agency as you enter in the networks. We'll have all that on a spreadsheet. Really available to you.
Excellent.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, motion been made. Yes, yeah. Uh, but I wanted to add, see, uh, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, I just wanted to ask if uh, we need to consider more additional radios or we can come back and do that. Because we have seventy-five thousand that we need to allocate on the grant.
And that should provide thirty radios.
Thirty.
Or the handheld radios.
So the question I have is rather, not just the two he's got, but actually consider more radios that we may, may use that seventy-five thousand for.
We can bound in the sound as we need it.
I would, I would amend my motion uh, to include uh, purchasing the. Using all the grant funds are available to purchase additional, uh, additional radio equipment, uh, radios.
Radios.
Uh, i- if you would amend your second to include that.
Seventy-five thousand, I believe, was available, Miss Sandy.
Correct. Right.
I don't know if I say all of that for radios, Cliff, because we don't know. We may have some little hiccup. I would just say, allow us to buy the radios that, additional radios that we need. Not specifically just precinct two or four, just what we need. Because we may need some more money for something else. Yeah. That's coming down the line here.
Well, I would. They give me a number of radios they want and and the models and types, they'll have to bill us a request from them in official quote. And that will come in the form of change order. So it will happen.
In the way this is written, discuss consider, or am I, discuss and consider purchasing additional radios from Van Zant County. It's not just pertaining precinct two.
No, it's all, uh, then then I would amend my motion to say, let's just say, you know, either fifteen or twenty. Um, you know, additional radios and then that'll leave a little, but you know, you've got two months. So the wheels of uh, justice and government turn slowly. So I I would rather go ahead and allocate that money. Uh, and so I would make, I would amend my motion to to be, uh, you know, purchasing additional twenty radios to be. Signed and allocated as needed.
I appreciate that. I was just sitting here thinking, you know, honestly, gentlemen, we have interest funds to cover hiccup with. But we have to obligate this money before December.
Okay.
So it might be best to go ahead and obligate this to radios and then use interest money on hiccup.
I'll second.
Then then my motion is to to, uh, my motion is to um, allocate the seventy-five thousand. And I remember the forty-one, seven hundred and forty-one, seven hundred and forty-one dollars uh, to the extent available. Uh, to purchase additional radios to be held and and assigned as necessary.
All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Bart, are you still second?
No.
No.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made. Say any further discussion? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion passes. Uh, item number thirteen, discussing, oh wait, no, we're going back to item number ten. Because our um. Okay. And uh, we're going to discuss uh. And consider, no, discuss, consider acceptance of request for branch regarding Nine Tree RV Park. Platte located on Farmer Market eight fifty-eight precinct four.
This is Mr. Abrit. Uh, he is the owner and then I guess developer of this RV park. Located in in precinct four and uh. He's gonna speak.
Yes, we're, we're uh, in the process. We've, we've uh. Uh, done everything we could to this point. Our request is that uh, to get various old pipeline. Uh, abandoned pipeline uh, that runs across our property. Um, it has been uh, abandoned for, according to the Texas Railroad Commission, for a number of years. For twenty-four, twenty-five years. Uh, there's a number of encroachments along the pipeline. Uh, through several counties that have been, uh, houses and buildings have been uh, built. On top of or right next to the pipeline. Uh, pipeline dead ends at uh, uh, Tank Farm Road. The tank farm supports are no longer there. Uh, the uh, actually we're, we're. Uh, we've, we've uh, developed the site, the plans to build around the pipelines. The only thing we have crossing that line are our roads. We've got four asphalt roads going across the. The pipeline. Utilities are separated so that utilities don't cross the road. Electric company will bring in a line. One time crossing the pipeline. Uh, other than that, there's no other coming. We've left thirty-foot easement on uh, you know, down the pipeline. Uh, so we're just asking for a, uh, for variance so that we can move forward and continue the development.
Yeah, I agree completely. You know, there's a uh, there's a gap in Texas law related to uh, easements. That haven't been in use. And in order for easements that haven't been in use to be able to uh, to be abandoned. The company has to abandon those and sign a release and put that release of record. Well, as so many oil and gas companies do, they either sell or uh, they go out of business. And there's not anybody left to uh, to to file an a, a release of an easement. And so there's a gap in in uh, Texas law and it it may be something that uh, uh, that that we can, that we can get with uh. Our state reps and senators, but you're absolutely right. There are easements all over. Pipelines that are in ground all over the area that uh, have never been released, but are not used. And what couldn't even necessarily, I mean, you could, you could pressure them up, but I don't think you could ever test them to the extent that they would put gas back into them again.
We don't know if this, if, because of the subdivisions that have been built on it. Uh, if those pipelines down the line still exist.
Yeah, but I mean, in 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 I would have less reticence in having an RV park over than I would uh, having a house. Because you could, you back up your truck up to the RV and move it. Um, so so I I have no problem with this and I'd make a motion to approve this variance.
Well, hold on, hold on. It's my, uh, being my precinct. And I'll, I'll apologize first call. I had Tonda DA come in and this is when he's really scheduled for October second.
Right.
Get him to October ninth. I was like, where is Tonda today? She's out of town. And I do not feel comfortable with giving a variance over an easement of a pipeline. Uh, without our DA's advice and uh, personally, I don't know if this court has the. Authority to do that. I think maybe it may be a civil matter between you and the oil and gas company. And so uh, I, I do not want to move forward with this until I have, you know, the DA's. Advice and counsel on this, because I don't, I don't know if we have the authority to do this. But uh, I think we need to dig deeper and uh, once again, it's my fault. I apologize when it was in second tunnel was gonna be here. But not, she's not. I didn't know that till just now. And I'm not comfortable with moving forward with this until.
Well, I I am, I am comfortable because um, like I said, I've done a lot of work on oil and gas pipelines and uh, oil and gas easements. Both as a landman uh, for, you know, since nineteen ninety-nine. And then as an oil and gas attorney from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty before starting my own private practice, I'm familiar with these. And there won't be anybody that that uh, there, there's three things that I think are important. First of all, there's not anybody that you can go and and uh, and get a release from. Because the company likely is defunct. Uh, number two, the uh, the issues related to this, it is a civil issue. And if we approve a variance today, we're just saying we're not holding you up. It doesn't re- remove any remedy from the uh, oil and gas company against the RV park. It doesn't remove any remedy for the RV park against the oil and gas company. All this saying, all this is saying is. Is that we're going to not stand in the way of you developing your property the way that you want to develop it. Um, and and so all legal remedies are still available to all the other parties on the table. And it's an area that uh, uh, that needs to be remedied. And and I I think it would be detrimental if we stood in the way from, from moving this forward.
We, we talked to the uh, uh, oil company that uh, has currently has the easement. They bought it from Conoco. Uh, I asked them about. The properties behind us, up and down the line that are built. And they said that happened before we built it. Before they bought it, uh, those buildings. So that, those releases came prior. Ours, of course, there was nothing there. Uh, you know, when we bought it, we bought it with balance. Holding that easement, having that easement. Uh, so they agree that, you know, what happened in the past. Along that easement, uh, they have no control over. So like the house behind us. Uh, you know, his house is right next to that pipeline. They can't come in and do anything unless they take his house out, which I don't think they have the right to do. I think they have gotten. You know, that covered before they built their house. Uh, it just happens that. We bought the land after Balance bought the easement.
No oil and gas company is going to give up an easement or give up any of their assets. Uh, they might have it hypothicated. So um, you know, getting a non-defunct company to give up a, a, an easement, even if it's not in use. Is gonna be, it's just not gonna happen.
Right.
That's.
I, I got a question. Uh, I've looked through this paperwork three times now. I have not seen anywhere. Mr. Abbott's remarks that you're asking us to variance. So I, I don't see the remarks. I mean, what is Mr. Abbott's remarks on here? You're asking us to give a variance on them.
Uh, just, just that we can build our roads across settings for, for asphalt roads. For twenty-four foot asphalt roads across settings. Yeah.
What is, what is Valant saying?
They are finding us on this that they don't have a problem with us building our roads across there. Uh, we've explained to them the utilities are split on either side, so the utilities are not going across. No water. Uh, no sewer, anything like that crossing the line. Uh, they don't have a problem with us putting the roads across. They don't have a problem with the thirty foot. What they want is control over the surface. If they decide to come in and do something, they can tear our whole park up. It's our bill. We have to pay for it.
See, that's where I'm not comfortable without, in all due respect of, you may be an attorney, but you're not my attorney. The DA is. And I want her, I want her knowledge on this before I make any decision on it. Because, I mean, this may not have anything to do now, but what about twenty years from now when Balance wants to come in there? And then this is gonna be a whole upward if nothing's in there. I'm not saying not to approve it or disapprove it. I'm just saying I would like to wait.
Table.
To table it till the DA.
Can you, can y'all hear me? Can y'all hear me? This is Mike, this is Mike Cannon. I'm the attorney for the Abrits. Uh, and I talked a couple of times with uh, Ms. Curry. And um, she indicated to me that that we would need to bring this matter to y'all. Um, I don't know y'all's names, but the uh, the attorney uh, that's on your court. The, uh, sir, you, you with the, with the, with the white beard, uh, with the coat on, with, with. You're exactly right. No company is gonna just give this up. Uh, because they, they just don't do that. But um, what they, what they've done is they. Uh, they have offered to give what's called a revocable um, license. That they can terminate anytime they want to, years down the road after, after the Abrits had put in all their construction. And basically like Kyle said, just, just come in and just at, at their discretion. Uh, without any consideration of what might have been done by the landowner. Um, to uh, tear up or take away whatever, whatever they feel like. And we just don't think that's fair. We don't think it's reasonable. What, what, we are, the only thing that they're, we are asking for. Is for y'all to grant a permit to allow us to put in the subdivision, I mean, the RV park. With the roads over the pipeline, with the clear understanding that down the road, we might have to work with the pipeline people. Uh, if they need, if they put that thing back in place, which we think is highly unlikely. Because the, the origin of this originally was a tank farm up to the north. And that thing's gone now. And we, we showed y'all pictures of that. It's completely gone. And like Kyle said, there's construction all along the way. And um, and all we're asking for. Is just let us build the roads over that pipeline with, and we understand that down the road, if Balance or somebody. That's a successor to them comes in and says they want to do something to that pipeline, and we're gonna have to work with them. We recognize that fact and we're willing to work with them. We just don't want them to stand in the way of us being able to put in our RV park. And be able to build the roads over the top of that. And and roads and things like that are, are built all over the state, over pipelines. And landowners have to work with and do work with the owners of these pipelines. That's, that, it's nothing extraordinary or out of, out of the ordinary course of business. That we're asking to uh, for y'all to allow us to do. We realize that they have rights if they, if they come back in and try to exercise them. We think it's highly unlikely that they ever will, uh, under the circumstances.
My question is, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer. Is what you just said is that y'all didn't like what the oil company's lawyers came back with. Y'all didn't like their verbiage. Y'all didn't like the, the way they had it worded because it was one-sided. And maybe it was. Uh, and I, I agree with what y'all are saying, but. You're asking us, in my opinion, to give you a variance because you don't like what the oil company says, which in turn makes that a civil matter in my mind. Which is why I would like the DA to be here to can, to get this done. I mean, we can talk about it all day long. And once again, I apologize. I didn't know she was out of town. She was gonna be on the second on this deal, but. I'm, I, she needs to be here, in my opinion, for this.
Well.
So I'm gonna motion to table this.
I, I, I already made a motion to approve it. Um, but um, but the uh, but but the larger issue is, is that the county's not liable. In any case, let's say we approve this today and the oil company comes back and says, um, we're gonna tear through your, uh, we, we need to do some maintenance down there. We're gonna, for some reason, there's been a substantial increase in production in the Van Zant County area, which doesn't happen. Natural gas prices are so low, nobody's drilling natural gas wells now anyway. But if, if they did, um, what would happen is, is that they would come through and tear up his roads. And then he'd have to go back and put his roads back after they completed whatever they needed to do in this. Um, but either way. The county is not liable whatsoever, doesn't have to participate, wouldn't not be a party in a lawsuit, wouldn't, wouldn't be anything else. It's just an administrative issue that we're gonna say, you go ahead and build your roads and whatever. Uh, whatever comes of that, that's your response, that's your problem. And that's the way it should be, in my opinion. That's why, that's why I, I reaffirm the motion to approve the exemption.
You know.
About four utilities on each side.
Four roads, you said?
Four roads.
What's going between them, four roads?
Sir.
What's going between the four roads?
Uh.
It's, it's vacant.
It's just.
Yeah.
Just it, we've got a thirty-foot wide uh, easement. And the four roads, there's nothing built on top of that, of that easement, other than laying the four roads. Utilities are separate from the pipeline. There's no, no uh, RV sites on the pipeline.
See here.
It's just empty grass.
See, the easement ghosts are here. And and you've got, you've got all the these on this side. They, he's got, he's got the easement uncovered. So there's nothing on the easement itself, except for the roadway that, you know, because this is his ingress, egress here. So it's just the roadway here. So if, if the oil and gas company came through and said, I want to, you know, I need to go in there and do something with that pipeline. Then they would, you know, tear up one road and and, you know, tear up two roads and and he'd just need to. Uh, figure out a different route to get people in and out for that.
Right, and we have, we have uh, uh, ingress, egress on either side of that pipeline into the park. It's just, uh, you know, getting over.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Is, is on one side.
That's right.
But we have uh, shower facilities and. But we have, uh, shower facilities and bathrooms on both sides of the pipeline off of the easement. So. You know, everything is built and it's separate. The only thing connects the two, uh, is the ropes, the four, the four rope.
Let me say, I appreciate you going to an effort to make sure there's no lights built on it and everything still care around it. You've done due diligence in that. I appreciate.
We, we've tried to cooperate and, and, and be reasonable with the oil company. And, you know, if they need to come in and do something, uh, you know, we've not hindered them in any form or fashion.
I want it. I know y'all have done y'all's due diligence, and y'all are doing right. But I'll re-again. I wanna make sure it's my precinct and I'll be the one responsible for this and whoever's next to her, this is who's responsible for this. And I wanna make sure I get it right. And I'm not ready to make sure I get it right yet.
Well, but, but honestly, you, you've had this available for a long time. You could have talked to Tonda at any point to determine whether or not.
Civil issue. I said, well, is it a civil issue? I go, well, we're gonna have them in court and we're gonna talk about it.
Well, that, that's what I'm saying is you've had, you know, you've had four, five, six weeks to get comfortable on this. And now he's here. He wants to move forward with this thing. And I think it's the right thing to do.
I don't.
Yeah, but you could have.
But I did it, just like your subdivisions, you could have.
Right. I, um, there, there is a motion on table to approve this. Is there a second? If there's no second in that motion, lies, is there a motion to table?
I'll motion to table.
All right, is there a second? All right, there's no second. So there's basically no action, uh, taken on this item as of today.
So what do I need to do then?
I will give a Tonda ASAP when she gets back, and then I will get ahold of you and we will get this resolved.
Yeah, it's, it's a.
But I will get ahold. As soon as I can. Once again, this was set for the second. I had her coming in here. I did not know she was out of town or not. So that is my fault. But I will get ahold of her ASAP. And as soon as I do, I, if I have to call a special session, I will call a special session. And we'll be taken care of.
I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Thank y'all, gentlemen.
Thank you, God.
Thank y'all.
You bet. All right. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approving public events to occur on a county courthouse on Sunday, October thirteenth. And Sunday, October twenty-seventh. We had two requests to have, uh, events on the courthouse steps. One comes from. Uh, representative of the Saint Therese Catholic Church and, uh, for a rosary. In, in front of the courthouse on the thirteenth. And then there's another one from, uh, Doc Collins, Republic of Van Zant. To have a prayer, Virgil, uh, Vigil, I'm sorry, uh, on, for the November fifth election. And that would be on Sunday, October twenty-seventh. So I'm just, uh, uh, looking for, uh, a motion. To, uh, approve these, uh, events on the public.
That's just on the, on the lawns out there. I'll motion that.
Let's say, motion made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Uh, pose like sign, motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss, consider, uh, approving the county judge to sign a contract. When it was Aprus Insights LLC as a statewide vendor to provide Savins for Men's End County. Okay, Savins is the, uh, uh, victim notification system and Aprus. That we approved that contract or that agreement, uh, last minister court meeting. Uh, this is the contract for the actual, uh, conducting the process and, and doing the work. And that is with, uh. Uh, Aprus Insights. So it's just, uh, renewing what we've been doing in the past. Uh, so is there, is there a motion to accept?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss, consider approving corrections to the. Fiscal year twenty-five salary budget for part-time worker hours for emergency management and Veterans Administration Officer. Uh, the, uh, the Veterans Administration Officer and the Emergency Management were paid, uh. In, as a stipend in, in last year. And, uh, the federal government or the federal labor laws required us to change that. We could no longer do that. We had to. Uh, put them, uh, on an hourly basis. And so that's what I proposed to do in, in the, uh, budget hearings. And, uh, a- as a part-time basis, it's, it's, uh, thirty hours or less, uh, per week. And that's what I stated in the, in the meeting, but the, the, these two workers will only work twenty-five. Hours a week and not thirty hours a week, and that affected their hourly rate of pay. This, uh. My, my request is going to be that we just show them to be twenty-five hours a week and not thirty hours a week. And it's no change whatsoever to the, uh, amount, uh, that is budgeted, uh, total amounts budgeted. It's just to get their pay rate corrected, uh, for the twenty-five hours. I, I.
They just made an honest mistake. We're trying to fix it.
Uh, that, that is, that is correct.
Oh, motion.
Okay. Uh, motion.
July, July the second, we had a budget workshop. And Mr. Barton, you made the motion. You mo- you. We can't motion everybody's workshop, right? But you did say you wanted it to be. Twenty-five thousand dollars a year at thirty hours per week at sixteen dollars per hour. If you make this change, then you're going to go to twenty-five hours a week. And you're gonna change those employees to nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents an hour.
They can't go over the max.
With a three percent, uh, five percent raise across the board. So these people are gonna get big rights. So, uh, you know, uh, you, you've got the situation the same in January fourth, where he wanted to change his part. I mean, you're basically opening a campfire on a part-time.
Now, I've already, I already talked to Judge Jean.
I thought it was.
Doesn't wanna make a change.
I thought it was just, uh, there, there's a maximum out and it wasn't in there for one, because we're going from thirty to twenty-five and still giving.
It changes that.
Cause they're making the same amount of money for the, for a reduced number of hours?
But if you change the hour, if you change the hourly rate and only working twenty-five, it would change the. The salary, right?
No, that will make, that, that will work less hours from minimum.
The current, the current calculation.
I'll be like, do that.
Well, we need to keep them at the same hourly rate, because that's the max rate, right?
Well, we have heard the salary structure for everyone except for running bridges. The salary structure, you said, for part-time individuals. How many hours a week that they work and the right, that pay?
Right.
Um. My JP's only get twenty hours a week. That's it. And they get twenty hours a week at that rate of pay. And unless you change that rate of pay, unless, unless you wanna change to that. Over that amount, you have to come to court. So that's one of the risks coming to court. But he's, then if you want to change the hour rate. Is that correct?
Uh, that it's correct to match what, uh, the, uh, number of hours that they're working.
You need to have a change in structure and salary. That's coming to court. So this is the challenge that he's on. I hope you get aware of the challenge.
So with the, with the motion that's on the floor, they increased from sixteen dollars an hour roughly to nineteen dollars an hour roughly. Because they're working not thirty hours a week, but twenty-five hours a week. So it's the same annual rate.
Correct.
They're just working less hours, so they're making more per hour.
You're correct. Good.
So why, why do they need five less hours a week?
That is what, uh, that is the, that is what they have been traditionally working for the past three or four years.
That was twenty-five.
Yes. Harry works three days a week and, uh, and Vicky works four to five hours a day. Both of them are very, it's a very specialized, um, job function that they do and, uh.
I'm kinda. Read my motion, because I'm kinda with Sandy. This could open up a can of worms. I was thinking it was the same hourly rate, just less hours. I thought we were just reducing the hours.
Well, I communicated with the Shin. He had originally wanted to do the same thing with his part-time. Was going to pay her a higher rate of pay because she only works two days a week, two.
Right.
Then I had one good reason that, you know, someone else who interested in that, that. So he reached out, I guess he decided not to.
That's correct.
Is to come before. But.
But that's just him. But if somebody else comes now, does this happen?
Right, that's. Did she get work sixteen hours a week? She's only gonna roll that first time, fifteen.
Sixteen or thirteen.
Seventy-three up and down.
Well, the, the, this came up because we had to change the manner in which we pay them. And, and I just didn't specify the number of hours per week that they work. That's why.
That was the, um.
Right, yeah.
We can actually make a motion.
Right. What do y'all think, Chris?
What's our, uh, we, we probably have not quantified our exposure. If everybody that had the opportunity to make this kind of a change did. We, we wouldn't know what kind of exposure we have, uh, at this point, any kind of ballpark estimation. On what kind of salary exposure. You know, if we went from sixteen to nineteen, I mean, our budget would stay the same. We would, we would, you know, in, in theory, just be looking at less hours. Yeah.
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 And then what happens when it turns out they need the extra hours and these people start working the thirty hours? At the higher pay rate, where do we have the extra funding to fill out the money for the, about the year you're on?
They have to be bargaining in and out, just like every other employee does, and not.
Correct.
Average, not valid. But that's the main thing. My concern is that they are bargaining, I'm bargaining.
Yeah.
Particularly, right? You know, so they get truly paid for what they're working.
Is it, is it a law they have to go to twenty-five hours a week?
No, the law is we can't pay them. We were paying them a fixed amount per month. And they, and when they did not keep hours, they did not report hours. So, but we are not allowed to do that any longer. So we had to put them on a part-time ba- on, as an employee, as a part-time basis. An hourly rate.
If I remember right, when we talked about boosting the pay in addition, we moved it up. And we originally wanted to stop it. Then we found out afterwards, we had to do the hour list. I guess that's where to break down to thirty hours. Can you, you want to stop and what it be?
Well.
Is that right?
Well, the, I just. I didn't look at the tape, so I can't tell you exactly what I said, but usually, uh, when you talk part-time, you're talking thirty hours or less. And I did not, at that time, give an actual hourly, uh, number of hours that these employees will be working.
But it was a five percent raise, right? So I would just. Whatever five percent is at twenty-five hour, give them the five percent for their hours. I mean, I don't know how you, we kept to calculate that.
And, and that's why I was saying, if I'm writing a budget, we originally gave them a raise in stopping. And then toward the end of budget, we found.
That is. Right.
So they still got the raise and we figured thirty hour.
So it, it's, uh, it's my error in using thirty hours. And, uh. So I, I'm asking to modify it to twenty-five. If, if there, Mister Barton has made a motion to, uh, to do that. Uh, is there a second?
He had seconded or. Or we're drawing that motion.
Okay, is it withdrawn?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion for anything? If not, then this item will die for a lack of, uh, action. Item number sixteen, discuss, consider authorizing the county judge to sign the Rural Law Enforcement Salary Assistance Program Grant. Agreement for fiscal year twenty-five. This is the, uh, SB twenty-two grant. Uh, we've, uh, applied for it and I just, uh, they have the agreement for me to sign. This is for the five hundred thousand dollars. That the sheriff's office will use for salaries in our fiscal twenty-five calendar year.
Motion made. Second.
All right, motion made. Say, any further discussion?
Yes, I did have one. I don't remember who it was. Can you do my office, can you do anything that we were paying this tax, without that grant? I just wanna clarify to the public that we are only paying correctional officers and debt.
And that is correct. Out of sheriff's office, not, not the, okay. So, uh, motion made. Say, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Uh, item number seventeen, discuss, consider Van Zant County's continued membership. With the East Texas Housing Finance Corporation. Uh, you know, I, I, um, have, had done a lot of research in this when they sent that letter over asking for our, uh, in. Uh, you know, approval of, of, uh, a new contract with them to, uh, use our head count, Van Zant County. Uh, and as we got a little bit deeper into this and we heard from a prior board member, at the time he spoke, he was a board member. Uh, the, the, uh, Van Zant had only been given two spots on this East Texas Housing Development Corporation. Uh, board, and they never had a meeting as a nonprofit. I don't know how that's legal. Uh, the board was not aware of the finances associated with the entity. Because the executive director had created a internal commission, an executive board, an executive advisory commission. And those folks made all the rules and determined what they wanted to do. Um, and, and as we got deeper into this thing, we realized that, uh, only a handful of people in Van Zant County had ever been helped. Since they began the program in nineteen eighty-one. And, uh, somebody pointed out to me, uh, on the letterhead. They didn't even include Van Zant as a county served. So, uh, I, I, um. Would like to make a motion that Van Zant County no longer, and I would mention, I had a telephone call this morning from county judge of a surround. Uh, the county down south that said they're no longer going to, they also voted yesterday. They have their commissioner's court on, on Tuesday. There, they voted to remove themselves from the East Texas Housing, uh, Corporation as well. So my motion is, is that Van Zant be removed from this organization, that we not approve the contract that they, uh, had signed, which. They said automatically renewed on one year, uh, you know, each, each year, each successive year. So I'm asking the court to consider, let's just move ourselves out of it. There are already a lot of first-time home buyer. That's what the, the program is set up. First-time home buyers, uh, although they didn't give, you know, the guidelines, they haven't helped anybody in Van Zant County. And I think that we have an opportunity between our realtors, our brokers, our mortgage companies that are here local. Our title companies, those folks that we should be supporting, they already have programs for first-time home buyers to, to get their first loan. And get them into a house. Nobody's more concerned about, uh, the free market than those who are living in it. So I, my motion is, is that we no longer be a part of, and we do not accept the East Texas Housing, uh, uh, contract.
This one came up a couple of weeks ago, you're talking about.
That is correct. I'll second table it. Right. And that's when, uh, Bob Reese got up and spoke.
Yeah, I, I agree.
All right, motion is made. Second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number eighteen, discuss, consider approval of purchase and payment. Of a twenty-twenty-four GMC Sierra fifteen-hundred truck, VIN number. Three GT UU A E D six R G four two two zero four six. For forty-six thousand, four hundred and one dollars and fifty cents and the trade-in of a twenty, uh, two thousand seven Ford. Uh, F one fifty, VIN number one F T R X one two W three seven N A seven four six seven nine. For Rowan Bridge Precinct three. I missed a couple of those numbers. Would you go over all that? No, I'm just doing that. I, I'd make that motion to approve that, uh, uh, but I, I defer. Uh, since this is, uh, this precinct three, this is Keith's.
Okay, I will say I made a mistake when I talked earlier on the transparency. I said those trucks are forty-nine seven. Apparently that was the cost. We got them down to forty-six, four oh one fifty. So both trucks cost forty-six, four oh one fifty. Same thing, beast trader truck in, safety issues, two or seventy thousand miles, hurt our trade-in and need approval.
Need second it?
I second.
Say it. All right, motion been made. And second, further discussion?
I, I'm in court last time. I, I'm in court last time. I, I, uh, I was trying to start, we talked about this over. But just putting in, I was twenty-five percent in it.
We, we made that exception.
Bob, and Bobby's, and it's okay with you, Bobby, right? Yes, good.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, exception was not noted in the, uh, in the deal. All right, motion made, uh, is all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number nineteen, discuss consider approval of the purchase and payment for twenty twenty-four GMC Sierra fifteen hundred truck, bin number three GT UU AED one RG four two one nine one nine for forty-seven thousand, nine oh one fifty for Roden Bridge Precinct four.
Same thing.
All right, is there a motion?
That's what I'm getting at. So I was just gonna ask. How can we got forty-six, four oh one fifty and forty-seven, nine oh one fifty?
Is it the fifteen hundred dollar trade-in, uh, the allowance that they got?
That's what it is. Yeah, precinct three traded it in, precinct four is going on auction.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. All right, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Uh, motion, uh, motion. Item number twenty, discuss consider approving the county judge to request an extension of the deadline to the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five for the funding agreement for the Texas Historical Commission Courthouse renovation grant. Uh, we were awarded a grant of nine and a half million dollars on July, the, uh, seven, uh, twenty-six, I believe it was, this year. And, uh, the, uh, the, uh, agreements wants us, they want us to sign the agreement or make the commitment by uh, October twenty-sixth of this year to accept that grant. Uh, we are not prepared to accept that grant because we have more costing to do to figure out, uh, what it, the end cost is going to be for us to do the renovation of the courthouse. The additional amounts are going to be, what is it going to cost us to relocate for a period of two years? We have to work together those costs. And then also there's additional, uh, changes to the, uh, ninety-five percent plans uh, to make the, uh, fourth and fifth floor of the courthouse, uh, uh, inhabitable by, uh, people. Uh, man, possible office space and that's going to cost. So we don't have the, uh, actual cost to determine how much we will need to fund, uh, as accounting for that. So what I'm, uh, I'm asking is, uh, the THC to extend this, which they've done this for other, under counties. So that, uh, we can come up with the final cost. And if the need is there for a bond election, uh, we will have, uh, two opportunities, either in May or in November of twenty twenty-five, which should do a bond election to cover the cost, uh, of the part that, uh, in excess of the nine and a half, uh, million dollar grant. So, uh, is the, is there a motion to, uh, approve the extension of the deadline?
I, I'm making motion to extend the, the, the deadline. Um, I, I have no problem with giving additional time to, uh, review that and so I'd, I'd make that motion.
All right, is there a second? There's no second. Do you realize that, that, that if we don't commit one way or the other, uh, the, the grant would go away?
I think you should have full court present. We're making this decision.
And we do have another meeting on the twenty-third. That's within the timeframe to make a decision.
Okay, so motion is, basically is no action today. All right. Item number twenty-one, discuss consider amendment to the lease contract with Tillman Infrastructure.
Yes, gentlemen, I put on the agenda, I'll bury here and, uh, walk through it.
Good morning, Court and, and Judge, commissioners and Judge. Um, to explain the lease amendment, uh, have to back up just a little bit, um, and explain, we talked about this maybe four or five weeks ago, but there was an issue with the contractually, um, lease or the, the lease with the contractual details on where the antennas were going to be installed on the tower down in precinct four. That tower is owned by Tow, uh, Tillman Infrastructures. Uh, once we determined that there was a problem, and this was because of AT&T installing at a different height on the tower than what they told Tillman and Tillman not doing their due diligence and realizing that they had installed in a different spot. And then it even got worse when Verizon installed on the tower too. And essentially those two carriers squeezed, squeezed out the county's proposed location. So because of that, we, I started working with Tillman to figure out what are we going to do about this. Um, the installation is going to start on the tower very, very soon. Um, so they offered up, um, you know, we can move down, we can move up. We looked at, we worked with Harris, L three Harris' engineers. And, um, the top of the tower worked out perfectly that we didn't exceed the FAA cleared heights. And we were able to get a lightning rod up on the top of the tower to make all the, um, the installation, um, you know, s- safe when it comes to lightning protection and things like that. So that's what had to move forward. And so a lease amendment was required to change those mounting heights of the antennas. Well, because of the, the change of the mounting heights of the antennas, L three Harris had to go back and, and relook at the coverage of the radio system and determine if they had to adjust some of the, the parameters to keep from having interference, self-induced interference. And, uh, rerun those coverage maps for the county and, and some things like that. So a change order for L three Harris um, was, was coming. And you, I believe that's the next, next topic on the, on the court agenda. That cost, um, was twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. So as part of this, I went back to Tillman. I said, Tillman, look, this is not the county's fault. This is y'all's fault and AT&T's fault that this data was not, um, you know, communicated. And that that wasn't provided to the county when this, uh, originally the heights of the antennas were picked by L three Harris. They agreed and I was able to negotiate with them that they are putting in um, rent abatement into the, this lease amendment that you have in your hands for thirteen point seven months, um, starting, I believe, October first. Um, that would abate the rent to cover the additional change order cost from L three Harris that we're going to talk about here in a minute. Um, not only that, but this lease amendment also does change the height of the antennas on the tower, uh, which L three Harris has approved. And it also contains some wording that, um, requires Hillman to also pay for this lightning rod extension on the top of the tower. Uh, that work will be done by the L three Harris Tower Climbing Company. And they will pay, Tillman will pay that company directly for, for those services, for those materials and services. So this lease amendment is changing the height of the antennas to a height that works for the design of the system. Uh, it actually goes up higher. So you're going higher on the tower. You're going to get a little bit better coverage. It's not substantial, but it is a little bit better coverage. Um, and it covers the lightning rod replacement cost paid by Tillman and it includes the lease uh, rent abatement for thirteen point seven months for twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars to cover the change order that Harris um, has presented the county for redoing the coverage. There is a drawing in there that shows where the antennas will be at the top of the tower. There's, um, um, two or three different places where it talks about that. And I've, I've reviewed all of those to make sure that they are in line with L three Harris' requirements, um, and they are. Um, so this is just a, an amendment to the original lease to change those items that I just discussed. This will be a zero cost to the county for this, as it should be, because this is not anything that the county did wrong. Um, or L three Harris did wrong. Um, this is purely a miscommunication, a lack of communication, if you will, between AT&T and Tillman, uh, on where those antennas were actually installed, which has caused this problem. And and just to add to that, Tillman's actually mentioned that this has happened numerous cases with AT&T before. Um, so this is not the first time and, um, but unfortunately it happened and it luckily there's zero cost to the county here.
Motion, we approve this lease amendment.
I'll say again.
Yep. All right, motion made. In, in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty-two, discuss consider a change order with L three Harris.
So as I was just saying, the, the whole thing with moving the antennas required Harris to do this additional engineering work on the coverage of the system, produce maps and look at the interference, uh, aspects of it as well. That's what that change order for twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars is. Um, the county would, uh, uh, consider approving that change order and the, the reimbursement of that change order cost would come over those thirteen point seven months as rent abatement on the precinct four site with Tillman Industry, uh, Tillman Infrastructure, excuse me. Um, so like I said, it, it is zero dollar, but it is over time of getting that, that paid back. Um, there, but the change order is for the redesign of the, of the system and the coverage and, and all that.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve that.
All right, motion is made for the change order with the L three Harris to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion?
We know where we're going to pay for this change order out of, we can't pay for it out of our, on, which can't supply it.
Our interest. Our interest is where need to come from him. Do you need that in the motion?
That's where I want to pay for it from. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Well, we had the contract with the, okay, so we're admitting the contract. So I didn't know we couldn't pay for those funds through that contract.
Well, it will be through the contract. We'll have to do that, the change door, it is a change order to the contract.
Fine, Chris, feel about that. And when I live in my expenditure for Harris, I have to press there.
So we just need to get the interest funds in. For the change.
All right. Uh, is that, uh, uh, you amended your motion to pay through our interest, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And you, you amended your second, correct? Include our interest. Okay. All those in favor of the change order, uh, paid to our interest, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty-three, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm motion.
Is there a second? Oh, we're going to stay here all day? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion pass. We can't, we can't leave. We can't leave.
I was hoping to order lunch in. Yeah. Ordered lunch in.
Thank you.
With that, sandwiches or chicken nuggets. I think, yeah, absolutely. Out of the Arpa fund interest.
The computer worked great there. Get connected, showed me all the pages.